Special meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners. I'll ask everyone to please stand and we'll ask Commissioner Crutchfield if he'll lead us with a word of prayer and then we'll remain standing for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the weather we got, the rain we needed real bad. We thank you for all the people that's as a county and hope they had a good Thanksgiving and I hope you lead us in making right decisions for what we do for the county. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we entertain a motion to through the agenda, I'll join Commissioner Crutchfield in asking everyone if they had a good Thanksgiving. I trust that you did. It's good. Good to have a few days off and glad that we're everybody's back, safe and sound. With that being said, Ms. Daniels, any changes to the agenda?
There's not.
Chair, let me entertain a motion.
I make a motion where through the agenda is presented.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock and a second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is stated. Please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Under public hearing, we've got a request to adopt a supplemental budget. Ms. Daniels, would you give us an explanation before we go into public hearing?
Sure. This is a supplemental budget that is adopted annually to include monies received and cash balances brought forward above or beyond the original estimate. And there is a resolution attached that we also asked that you approve after the public hearing.
Okay. With that being said, we'll close out our regular meeting, go into the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the supplemental budget that we're being asked to adopt a resolution about? Seeing no hands in the audience. Fred, is there anyone online wishing to speak either for or against the supplemental budget?
No, sir. Not today.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, since there's no one in the audience nor online wishing to speak either for or against the adoption of the supplemental budget for FY twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, we'll close up the hearing, go back into special session. Who wants to give an explanation on that? You or the son?
So this is the supplemental budget for revenues received and expenditures going to the previous fiscal year. The initial budget was a hundred and two million, seven hundred and six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And we want everybody to pay this town and increase to a hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars, six hundred, six hundred and sixteen dollars. So the difference between that is fifteen million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Yep. So the supplemental budget that we're being asked to adopt a resolution is a hundred and eighteen million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars.
Yeah.
Okay. Heard the explanation. Any questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the supplemental budget, yeah, point two to point three.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
So the changes that were made. Was that in grants that we received or?
There's some grants.
After the?
Yes, there. So there's some grants that we received after the adoption of the budget last year. There's some. We adjust for if we receive excess revenues over an estimate or less revenues, expenditures, things like that. So it's a correction. It's not necessarily carry forward money to spend in the new budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is stated. Please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Moving down the agenda to reports and requests. Item number one under section two is board approval of the fire rescue station lease with the town of Alford. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, before I go into that item, I did want to say on the supplemental budget that it sort of reminds me of preparing the Thanksgiving meal that the person that prepares that does a lot of work and everyone eats it in about five minutes. And I feel like Sarah sort of prepared Thanksgiving meal for y'all and then you ate it in less than five minutes. So I wanted to just say thank you, Sarah. She at one point was up for over twenty-four hours straight crunching this supplemental budget. And so thank you.
Perhaps for Christmas, we can get her a better calculator.
So it was her first time and Tony's first time with them doing it together, the two of them. So her and Tony, they navigated their way through it, but I I felt like we should pause and recognize the effort.
I'd like to join with Will Ann and saying basically, Sarah, we certainly appreciate the work that you and Tony did on getting this done. I know it was effort on your part. And as you get more experiences, we've talked about, you get more experience, it'll come a lot more quicker to you. And we look look forward to you continuing to work on it in years to come.
Absolutely. So this is the Alford Fire Rescue Station lease. This was as a result of the negotiations that you all recall going back and forth in the summer. We did settle on a one-year agreement for four seventy-five per month, as well as in this agreement, we agree to do any maintenance that comes up as a result of our crews.
Running into a door or something like that.
Exactly. If we damage the building in some way, we are responsible for that maintenance on the building. So it's just a one-year term. They'd like to revisit this next year, so I'm comfortable with proceeding.
The the original offer that they made us was what? Was a reminder to the board?
It was a thousand.
Yeah, a thousand. So there's some hard work and negotiations on Will Ann's part. We got it down to a more manageable amount. And I think that the town of Alford and George Gay, I know was instrumental in those negotiations. I think we ended up with a lease amount that's both beneficial to the county and also takes into account what the town of Alford's needs are. So I think it was a win-win situation.
Their main concern was if something should happen that they don't have the margin to fix. And so we've alleviated that by saying if something happens, we'll just pay for it. If it's something we cause and but keeping the monthly rent more in line with what we were paying.
Do they have their own air conditioner or is it all one building?
They have their own, I believe. There's one. Well, no, they share it with the city hall, don't they, Fred?
It's one building, but they have these split on their side. They control their living quarter.
I thought I read here something that had to be replaced. We'd had to pay for that.
There we are.
Or there, if there is, I don't think that it was for natural wear and tear, though.
That's not what it says.
If something happens.
Like if they had to replace the air conditioner, we'd be responsible or we'd be responsible to have it repaired, even one of their.
If it's on our side of the building.
I thought I read where it said we'd had to pay for it and replace.
One of the concerns was the thermostat was being manipulated to a below maintainable level. Pressures being freezing up, causing issues on the, on the air conditioner itself.
That's right.
So that's the kind of issue they're trying to mitigate.
Now, in this lease, they they pay for the utilities, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So four seventy-five includes utilities.
That's right.
I I got problems with this. Which is as is, you know, landlord shall have no duty to maintain the premises. So we're going to maintain the premises and then it talks about the mechanical systems. And if there is a problem, we have to, it has to be replaced, we have to replace it.
That's with the air conditioning on the side of us, on our side.
That's right.
What's the deductible on the insurance on the building? Do you know?
I don't, but it would be, it would be their insurance. If something happened that was a something that could be claimed on the insurance, that would go through them.
Well, we don't have to pay the part of the insurance. That's a big portion of, I mean, it costs a lot, the insurance going in.
The the biggest thing that I could see as far as an expense happening is the air conditioner. I mean, there's just not that much to the building.
And to me, the four hundred and seventy-five dollars for, you know, the amount of square footage that we're renting for a one-year lease seems to be a fairly reasonable amount. As you said, the portion of the building that we're responsible for is not is not a whole lot that could go wrong with it other than the air conditioner.
Right.
Unless, again, we ran into the door.
And in their case, that's on a budget of their size, that's a genuine concern of theirs is that especially if we're running the air really low and things that, you know, they feel like could be putting a strain on the system.
Oh, another thing, you know, if they pay for the electricity they use, which is not a lot, I'm sure, but a lot, but it's some. And the insurance, if you divide it up, the insurance with them. You know. I don't know what the insurance costs there, but I know what it costs my house. But if you divide it up, even a third, it could be a thousand dollars. Right there by itself, you know, your county could be held. So, I mean, it's not all profit they're getting.
To me, it seems to be a fairly reasonable rent.
Well, how many square feet are we getting?
It was about twelve hundred square feet.
I think it's about a thousand, maybe.
A little over a thousand, it seemed like.
I just saw several things in there that got my attention and us having to replace, you know, plumbing, electrical or anything like that. HVAC. I don't like it. And then we got to maintain it in first-class condition.
Doesn't it say there, but not replacement of the premises, including all mechanical items, systems, i.e. HVAC and the systems that exist?
Repair and maintenance and then premises, but not replacement of the premises. Including all mechanical items or systems, HVAC.
So we wouldn't have to replace it if it went out.
Yeah, but you go here and said tenant assumes responsibility for the cost of replacement of any mechanical items or system that exclusively service the premises. You would.
Conover Dixon said, didn't?
Well, I didn't write it. But then, but I would, that got my attention when I read it. Maybe I should copy this lease when I rent my house again.
Well, we can pay a thousand dollars a month and then replace it if something happens. I mean, that's basically the other option at this point.
Yeah, to me, it's only for a year. If it becomes problematic, if this particular lease becomes problematic over a period of year, then we can go back and look at it again.
Well, we know we're going to have that for a year. We gotta do some.
Yeah.
I mean, I know what else to do, so.
We looked at, I think in, in the process of exploring and doing due diligence, we discussed some other locations that Fire Rescue could move to in the service area. And there were not any options that were feasible in the short period of time.
And certainly not as cost-effective as this.
Yeah.
I make a motion where through this.
Got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield.
A second.
Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is stated. Please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign. Motion for explore to woman, Commissioner Peacock, but no. Okay, moving down the agenda. We've got a request to set a public, set a special meeting for Compass Lake in the Hills. Ms. Daniels, I think this is relative to the various requests that we've been getting. Protecting to issuance of development orders for manufactured housing and mobile homes.
It it is, but specifically for the attorney to brief you all, it's some information we afforded to you all several months ago. But she's just never really talked that through with you all in a public setting. And so she'd like the opportunity to talk about it in this format. And also for it to be an advertised meeting where anyone that wants to join that conversation is able to.
Well, you know, based on, based on the interest that we've had in this, this issue in past meetings, I think we need to account for a fairly lengthy discussion period because I think there's going to be several people.
And we were looking at after the first of the year, so January timeframe.
Are we looking to do a morning or an evening meeting?
Well, I just think it's.
It's going to be long. I would prefer morning to evening.
And I'm, I'm good with that. I just don't want to do it as part of a regular meeting.
I don't want to be sitting here until 2:00 AM.
Right. 2:00 AM.
Yeah, if we do an evening meeting. This, this is going to be a long meeting.
Long night, yeah.
So you may have to walk along.
The Tuesday in between your two January meetings, it's Tuesday, January sixteenth. I don't know if that would.
What? There's a legislative days or?
That is on Wednesday. That's the next day on the seventeenth.
Yeah, but it starts out with an early morning breakfast. And presentation.
On the seventeenth?
Yeah.
I'm talking about the sixteenth for the.
You're talking about Tuesday, the day before that.
Right. I'm just saying, don't do it in the evening if we got. Some of us may go over and spend the night.
I think do it.
We got Tuesday morning. Six AM meeting.
Nine o'clock.
Tuesday.
Tuesday the sixteenth at nine o'clock.
Finally.
We'd have three Tuesday morning meetings in a row. All right, somebody make a motion. Is that good with everybody?
Yes.
Tuesday the sixteenth, in between our regularly scheduled morning meeting and our regularly scheduled evening meeting.
Make a motion where.
I've already made.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield to set a special meeting just to discuss Compass Lake in the Hills issues and hear from our attorney on January sixteenth at nine o'clock AM. Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is stated. Please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That includes our presented agenda. Ms. Daniels, anything else?
I do not.
Okay. Commissioner Peacock?
Always.
Always.
No, I really don't have. How fast.
Mr. Branch? I do. It's come to my attention that the, I know we've discussed it at a, at a meeting before with the TDC and the Otten's Club, request for some monies to help them with the, with the Christmas tournament. I don't really see. I don't think the people that made that decision, or some of them, some of them do, some of them don't, don't really remember the impact that that thing can have. I've been out there at them before when that whole help center was full. Bottom end top, they were standing in the, in the lobby to watch it. There's been, and, and I don't know when it went down, but it went down to where they didn't have one in these. And I think the Otten's Club is one sponsoring it. They're trying to get that thing built back up. And I think it could be a really good thing for Jackson County. Looking at it and remembering how it used to be. I've been out there the last two or three they've had and it's gotten bigger every year. I mean, it, it could be in a, it could become a big thing for Jackson County. You go anywhere in the state of Florida and you talk to anybody about basketball, they're going to mention Jackson County. It's just they know the history of it here. You know, they, I went out there and watched people play high school ball that wound up in pros. You got a man, you got a young gentleman from Washington County right now from Chippewa that played in the pros. He played out there. I've been there where coaches, professional coaches and college coaches will sit in there to see them. Play. And I just think we're missing the boat. We spend so much money and we vote for them to spend money on advertisements and hoping to get something here. And I think we've got something here that we could build on and we're not, we're not taking advantage of it. I totally understand, like I said. I don't know who was on the committee. I know you are and you probably remember it. But some of them probably don't. I mean, that could be. That's one of the few things I think that we can not only advertise for and spend money for, but we already know some of that money's going to stay in motels and restaurants and gas stations. There, you know, I was at the meeting when we discussed it the last time, and I think there is a realization, of course, that, were you there, Will Ann? It was not a well-attended meeting, but there was enough people there to have a forum. And I, I think from the people that were there, they, they understand everything that you just said. I think there is a realization that the amount of dollars that need to be spent on these events does need to go up in the future. And I think that the idea that was presented by Kelsey helped me remember if this is correct, but the idea is that, you know, with this new fifth sense being put in play, that they're going to be able to revisit the amount of grant funds that can be spent on events such as this. And, you know, some of the concerns that were concerned, some voiced, some of the concerns that were voiced was that, yeah, while indeed there were a few teams that were playing in this tournament that were from out of town, majority of them were, were local teams and were not staying in hotels. But I guess my point is, it was discussed and I think that there, there was a commitment to increase the funding. I don't remember.
To five thousand.
Five thousand, which is less than the twelve thousand that they recommended, but more less than twelve thousand that they requested, but more than the two thousand that they originally gave. And the idea is to, again, in next year's budget to allocate more funds for event funding type events such as this one. So I think it was a good compromise solution.
Let's don't, I don't know about that. How much money do they have in their reserve?
Reserve, I could tell you. Will Ann, you might remember.
A million, eighty-eight thousand, twenty.
Eight hundred thousand in, there's two different funds. One, there is the lockbox. And then there's between eight hundred and a mil, eight hundred thousand and a million in their rollover, but five hundred of that is committed to matching dollars. But that, that wasn't really the point of, that yes, there's money you could pull from. But it was that what was approved in the budget was thirty thousand to go towards the event funding.
Well, when I was on the, there, I told them that that was not enough money. And they needed to adjust it, but obviously they did not. And the statute allows events like this.
Sure.
Funding events like this. Now, I agree with Commissioner Branch. I think we're missing the boat. We waited until the end and I don't know who bears the blame for that, but you know, we were two months out when this was presented to us. That they were cutting them from twelve thousand to one thousand. To me, that's wrong. They should have cut it back first of the year, told them, this is what we're going to do. If you're going to decrease it, put them on a sliding scale of decreasing it, just don't whack it from twelve to one. And that's what they had at one instead of two thousand. So five helps, but I think ten is a much better number.
Just don't forget that, that there's not any money out there that this organization is putting it on, is going to keep. Well, another concern was there were, there was a lot of the funds that were being, and again, I'm going back to memory from when we met and maybe even previous time. There, there was money being spent on officiating. There was money that was going back to Chipola College. Renting the facility and concessions.
Well, it was, and this was at the last meeting we had out at Endeavor, but that there was a, a double portion going to Marianna, like all the schools aren't getting an even portion. And I'm not saying whether we should even have an opinion on that. I'm just reporting some of the concerns. That Chipola was getting a portion when, when they're already paying to rent the facility and Chipola keeps the concession proceeds. And so the bigger, the biggest concern, I think the TDC, and you can speak more to this than, than I can, is that their interest is heads in beds, period. And so if the county wants to look at, okay, but we want to invest in other kinds of economic impact, that's fine, but the TDC's mission is to increase overnight stays. And this event, according to what was provided to them, just simply did not do that.
Well, it, it will bring people here if we build it. You will get a lot more people, heads in beds. They can fund events by statute.
Oh, yeah. Well, the TDC funded the Chipola basketball tournament for many, many.
And as far as who gets what. It's, that's something that needs to be worked out. I just, I think we're selling ourselves short on this one.
Again, I think the TDC did hear the fact that, you know, there does seem to be concern among this board that some of those, what I'm going to call local events, because again, I, I don't, it doesn't have as much of an impact on heads and beds is what, say, like the Chipola basketball tournament did, where you were bringing teams from Bradenton, Miami-Dade, Fort Lauderdale. I mean, you were bringing teams up here from all over the state. And that, that did have a huge impact on the, on the hotels. This tournament, I, again, from, only from what I've been told, doesn't have as much of an impact with, I think, only two of the teams being potentially ones that may stay overnight, or the rest of them were what I would say, local teams, Malone, Marianna, the local teams, and then some from Tallahassee and Dublin, wherever. But according to what the TDC said, that there was really only two teams that were going to be staying on the sixteen.
There weren't.
He said there was more than that.
Well, by the time, that is what was reported, what he is saying at this last meeting. But they also had concern that the there are multiple people getting paid to run the concessions and paid to do this and paid to do that. So it's sort of, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but we're giving all of this money, but then all these people who were volunteers are not really volunteers. And so it sounds like there was a lot of.
I guess my point was, there was a lot of discussion about this, both pros and cons. And my, my counterpoint to the, if you recall, my counterpoint to the fact that they were having to pay volunteers is one of the, one of the big problems that Chipola had and one of the reasons why Chipola's not having that tournament any longer is because they were relying on the same volunteers year after year after year at Alice Capps. There were Joyce Trainum, there were a bunch of them that were there every year, were spending, you know, five or six days in preparation for the tournament, five or six days during the tournament. And those people just got burnt out. And then there was nobody to come in and fill their shoes any longer. And so the days of, like it or not, the days for people wanting to volunteer their time, just not like they used to be when, when all we, when we grew up, younger generation. Sorry, but the younger generation just does not seem to have the, and again, I'm not talking about everybody by any means, but but, you know, it just doesn't seem to seem be that same commitment to volunteerism. Well, and I think that's one reason that you've got, you've got to expect to spend some on them. Now, the last two years I've been out there and, and there was a lot of volunteering going on. I know they paid the officials. They had to pay for rent and all this. But my point is, my whole point in this thing is, if we don't start building this thing now. I mean, I've been there when teams from Miami, four, five teams from Miami was there. Daytona Beach was there, from up Georgia, from Atlanta was there. We don't need to let it sag one year and, and decrease interest in it. Because it, it can be a money, it can be a moneymaker for the people of this county, not so much for the county. Per se, us, I'm talking about for the, for motels and the restaurants. So I've seen it. I've seen it packed day after day, or week at the time. And I just think we need to support it every bit. I don't think, and the thing about it is, any money that's made out there is going back to the kids. Not going anybody from the Otten's Club's pocket or anybody else. It's going for the kids. I just think we need to support it and.
I'll go back to the statute. The TDC funds can be used to run museums, aquariums, sports parks, baseball stadiums, all that type stuff. I guarantee you, they pay people to work those things. They don't have volunteers. So we're not doing something illegal by paying the officials. You got to have them.
Yeah, I don't think that was ever, that was never an insinuation, anything illegal was going on. I mean, that was never part of the discussion. I mean, am I wrong?
Oh, no, no. That, that was not the insinuation. I think the, the point of that was that whether this was intentional or not, that there was a lot of confusion and misunderstanding of what the funds were being used for, but not that, not even that someone was intentionally doing that, just that, hey, we didn't realize this and this. And then as far as them being notified the first of the year, the TDC does not operate off the assumption someone will apply for. The TDC does not operate off the assumption someone will apply for anything. They notify once they apply for it. And so, um, they didn't get that in either in the timeframe that was requested. Uh, that can be worked around. That's not the end of the world, but that's why they weren't notified until they were.
Do, do they have uh X amount of dollars so they know they're won, come in? And that's what they're gonna have to spend out. That what, what they're looking at there?
They, they budgeted roughly thirty thousand dollars for a, a event spending like this and, uh.
They're gonna spend that thirty thousand.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and, you know.
In fact, they've already spent that, haven't they?
By saying that, there's no word to cut, cut back. Like I read, they pay so much to teams, what I understand I'm saying. They couldn't cut a team, cut several teams so much, they, they, that, I mean, I. I guess it pretty much said what they're gonna give. They don't do any cuts, so they're looking to try to get that money. If they don't, they're in trouble.
Yep.
Kind of like we would be, you know, we spend more than what we got allocated, we're getting, you know, I don't. I, I agree with uh, with them about bringing all the people in, I think, uh. But the county itself, probably, oh, they don't really get out of it as little taxman. That they buy something, it's taxed or a motel, they do stay in a motel, they'll get some tax there. If they, if they're not many motel, uh, staying in motel like all the local, they're going back home. Then not gonna get money back, but it might be that something could build into something back. Where they're coming from way off, there'd be a lot of money coming back. You're gonna get some of the money back, regardless. If we put any money out ourselves in.
Right, and I agree with uh Commissioner Branch, uh, I remember when a real big moneymaker, a lot of foot traffic in and out of this county. You know, uh, we need to get it back to that level.
Well, that, that being said, I know they asked for twelve thousand, but I'd like to propose a motion, give them ten.
I can.
Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, a second from Commissioner Pickup. Any other questions, comments? My only comment would be, you know, I think it's a little, maybe a little unfair to, to do this without having the TDC here to, uh. Uh, to defend uh their position on it, but with that being said. Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner Pickup. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to one, myself voting no. Uh, basically, again, I, I felt like it was a problem, but it'd be best to uh have the TDC here to uh explain. Uh, their position on that to the board, so that you have better understanding of what I was able to convey. It's just one of the board members.
I don't have, excuse me, I don't have a problem with that, but I think the night that Mr. Johnson was here and people were calling in. I think we already knew, I did, I took it from that. And, um, I just, I just think it's a good thing for this county. I'll give you an example. There's an elderly man and a lady that lives in basketball. You go out in the last two years, every game they had, I'd tell you where they were gonna sit. They loved it. They were gonna be there from time it started to the time it was over. People like that in Jackson County. It used to be more so than now, but I think it's getting back that way.
Well, I think as it goes on, you'll get the teams from Atlanta, you'll get them to Miami, get Jacksonville. And to the West Mobile and other areas will come in. It'll draw people in here.
Well, at one time, there was two tournaments that went on out there every year, every December. There's a subway shootout, and then the Christmas tournament. And both of them were full. They, they were a week at the time, and they were just, there were people everywhere. And I'd like to see us get back to them.
And, and again, my, my vote against it was not, uh, because of, uh, because of, uh. I, again, I, I'm a supporter of the Optimus Club. I support the Optimus Club in a lot of different endeavors. And I think it does have the uh capability of being a, a good tournament and good, good for a lot, good at a lot of different levels for the county. Uh, I just, I always have a hard time when you've got, uh, uh, people that are serving on a TDC board like that. And have, that, that have, uh, that give their time, uh, volunteering to a board like that, and they've gone through it in a lot more detail than what we know. I just, I like to try to respect their decision as much as possible, and the fact that they did come back and, and readdress it. And increased the amount from a thousand dollars to two thousand, whatever the original request amount was, up to five thousand. I thought that showed, uh, uh, you know, the fact that they did.
And I appreciate them doing it.
I appreciate what they do, but, you know, ultimately, it comes to us.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, Commissioner Branch, anything else? Mr. McKinney, anything down at the rim? Mr. Crutchfield, uh, Jared, uh, me, uh, Jeffrey, uh. I talked to you about, uh, uh, Harstville Road. Did, were they able to get out there and do anything with that yet? Say it again? Okay, good, good. That'd probably work better since we had so much uh rain out there, that what the uh western portion of that road was in pretty bad shape. I actually rode it, had a big rut down the middle of it, so hopefully it, with the work that they've done, maybe rectify that situation. Okay?
I do have one more thing.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, I need to appropriate some money for the, uh, put rock on a, on a road. And I think we need to do a motion on it.
Mm-hmm, for Twin Pines Road.
Uh.
Discretionary money?
It's gonna be some construction money I have.
You have the money.
Is that not right, Jeffrey?
The money, the money that he stopped on the football field, we do the change order, close it out at the December twelfth.
Is that gonna be enough money to do that, right?
Well, we'll see. We'll spend it till it's gone.
We're gonna borrow something.
Come on.
So, are you, you talking about doing this change order to the existing contract?
We had to pull, when there was a change order to put additional money from his discretionary fund towards the McCormont Lake Roads, you and Daniel. And we will have another change order to reduce some of that, so some of his discretionary money that was originally allocated. To McCormont Lake is gonna be coming back. Now those funds need to be put on Twin Pines, but we need to get that contract closed out to see what the dollar amount's gonna be. And then we can address Twin Pines as to what work needs to go on there.
So, can we do that by the twelfth meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I got one question, uh. The, yeah, but the excavator you said is down at Compass Lake?
Land of the earth, I understand.
Okay, just need to, uh, get it back up here and clean out some ditches. What about, uh, Stevens Road? Can you ever get an answer for me? You need to borrow my calculator?
One of them people that he stopped by getting there. Well, two years ago, a hundred sixty-one thousand, but you figure probably.
Ten percent.
Say third to forty percent of that left.
It wasn't that much, was it?
We actually did put it out for bid, and that was, that was the bid amount for Chippewa two years ago. I, I'd account for two hundred of there.
Right.
Anything else?
Uh, that's all.
Jeffrey, I still do wanna ride, uh, Norton Steel Road with you one day this week, uh, maybe before the rains get here, so I'll get in contact with you about that. Okay, anything else, Clay?
Did we ever vote on Twin Pines?
No, cause they'll bring it back on the twelve.
Get them.
They'll bring it back on the twelve.
That's all I wanted.
Very good. With that being said, we'll adjourn this meeting and adjust.